To call the Cumberland School Committee meeting to order at 6:51. I'd like to ask you to rise and pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it at 7:00. Next item on the agenda is swearing in of new members. Good evening. We are having Attorney General with us this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here, and I apologize. Please don't order the superintendent to give me after-school detention.
Detention?
Detention, yes. Are we ready to begin?
Yes, we are.
First, I do thank you for the invitation to do this. It does mean a lot to me. And I do congratulate you all on getting sworn in this evening. And with that, I will ask all of you to please stand for a moment. Please raise your right hands. Aye, please state your name.
Aye.
You solemnly swear
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
And obey the laws of the United States of America
And obey the laws of the United States of America.
And the state of Rhode Island and Providence plantations.
And the state of Rhode Island and Providence plantations.
That I will, in all respects
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter and Ordinances
Charter and Ordinances.
Of the town of Cumberland
Of the town of Cumberland.
And will faithfully
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of school committee person.
Of the office of school committee person.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is new business election of officers. First officer's position would be for the position of school committee chair. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to make a nomination.
Mrs. Teal?
I'd like to nominate our current chairperson, who I believe is on the leadership. We've accomplished great things over the last few years, and I fully support her as continuing to serve as chair of the school committee. So I'd like to make a nomination for you, so.
So we have a motion. I'll give it a second. Are there any other nominations? I will call the nominations closed for chairperson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 7:00. Thank you. Thank you all. Next item is the election of officers for the vice-chairperson's position. Do I have any nominations?
And chair.
Mr. DeMonica.
And make a motion. We select Raymond Salvatore as vice-chair.
Mr. DeMonica nominates Mr. Salvatore for vice-chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dunne. Are there any other nominations for the position of vice-chair? I will call the nominations closed. And any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 7:00. Congratulations, Mr. Salvatore. Next election of officers would be for the position of clerk. Are there any nominations for the position of clerk?
Mrs. Teal? I'd be happy to make that. I'd like to make a nomination of Mr. Dunne, please. I think he would be an excellent for And I would be happy to share my notes.
Specialist.
Yes. Excellent. Thank you for supporting that, Mrs. Teal.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that and just please that I might even think about body of my
Well, we're not closed yet. So we have a motion and a second for Mr. Dunne. Are there any other nominations for clerk? Okay. All those in favor for Mr. Dunne.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 7:00. Congratulations, Mr. Dunne. Give it to the new guy.
He's starting.
Yes, indeed he does. Okay, and then that is the completion of the election of officers. We have school committee subcommittees, and those are assigned to positions. I'm not sure what I was lost by. It's a paper. What we'll do for fiscal is we will have Mr. DeMonica as the chair, Mr. Fiorello and Mr. Dunne as members. For policy, we have Mr. Fiorello as chair, Mr. Salvatore and Mr. Dunne as policy members. For achievement, we will have Mrs. Teal as the chairperson, Mr. Duffy and Mrs. Bolio as members. As far as school committee liaisons, what we've done in the past and will maintain this moving forward is you are a liaison to whatever school is within your district, and if you have a child as a member in that school, you will also represent that school. And there may be duplicates, but it seems like that's worked out so far, so we'll continue with that. Next item is discussion of orientation of school committee members and selection of dates. Do we know specifically what's that for, or is this just something that's been rolling along on our agenda? All right, so we've had enough orientation over the years, and certainly have had plenty of opportunities for professional development. We do it through the School Committee Association as well. Next item is comments from the public. Anyone here wish to speak this evening? No? Okay. I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello and Mr. DeMonica. Do I have a second? You can try that. Second by Mr. Dunne. Any further comments? Some more training? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned at 7:58. Thank you, everyone. 6:58, sorry. Meeting to order at 7:31, and ask you to please rise and pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. Fiorello and Mr. DeMonica, second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 7:00. Next item on the agenda is the student government report. Student activities. Good evening, ladies.
Hi, we're the student government. My name is Kate Kono.
And I'm Sarah Lofne.
Past events that we had in student government were a spirit week and blood drive. Spirit week went over very well. We had huge shout-outs for the school after events, and we had students well-behaved, and they all enjoyed everything, and students, the seniors, won the spirit award. We also had the blood drive in October, and it was very successful. We had 62 pints of blood that were donated, which means 186 lives were saved.
And as for the current events, in November, we have turkey baskets, the rink ceremony. For turkey baskets, we're holding our annual turkey baskets until November 25th. We're collecting non-perishable food items in turkeys to make Thanksgiving baskets. The baskets will be donated to families in need in the Cumberland area. Our goal is 150 baskets this year. Any unused food that is collected will be donated to the Happy Basket program. And as for the rink ceremony, on November 20th, Cumberland High School will be holding its annual rink ceremony for current juniors. At the ceremony, the junior class will be presented with their classroom.
An upcoming event that we have is adopt a family. Throughout the month of November and December, student government hosts the Adopt a Family program, where local families are chosen for the program through faculty and staff, and student government will collect items on the families' wish lists. The gifts are presented to the families, and each student government member is assigned a family. They go out and donate money and gifts to the families who are in need, and completes the turkey dinner.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have four items. We have the approval of minutes from regular meeting 1023, the enrollment report from November 1st, the school police report from October 1st, and the residency truancy report from November 1st. Pleasure of the committee on the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 7:00. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, electronic report card distribution. Dr. Thornton?
Good evening. Today around 11:30, we launched our first electronic report card distribution. At that point, we already had 250 folks who logged in. You now get your grades for the high school online. Parents still want to bring up, they didn't get one. Essentially, now we are green, and we are doing our reporting electronically. The middles, as you know, are tries. That's a little later in the fall, early December, update for that. So we're excited. It's the first time, it's a part, it's been going well. It's our first, you know, 10 hours out from the launch. Second item, just one more middle school chrome book walks led for November 19th. Several members of the town council and the mayor will be walking little chrome in the middle at 8:00 AM, 19th, to see the chrome books and actually to watch them while they're coming.
Thank you. Next item is the chairperson's report, the funding formula, and the BEP. I have nothing this evening, but I do know that RIDE is beginning its kind of pre-budgeting process, so it will be providing us with some figures that will kind of tie in earlier to the budget. Next item on the agenda is reports of standing committees, payment of bills. Mr. DeMonica?
I'm chair of the finance subcommittee. Did meet tonight, three to zero vote to send it to the committee. We approve payment of bills of $1,285,622.10.
And two votes of passage of the payment of bills?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. DeMonica, and do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dunne and Mrs. Teal for payment of bills of, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. DeMonica, $1,285,622.14?
10 cents.
10 cents, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries 7:00. Thank you. Next item is fiscal management subcommittee update. Mr. DeMonica?
I'm chair of the finance subcommittee. Met tonight again, and we got an update from Mr. Pignano on the budget, discussion of waste disposal contract with the town, so we can resolve some of those issues, discussion of the high school practice field and trying to get water out to them, and no other votes are taken.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. DeMonica? Next item on the agenda is policy and procedures subcommittee update. Mr. Fiorello?
I will defer to Mrs. Teal for my final bit to do.
For my final summary. We did meet on October 28th, was a little while ago. We went over a number of policies that'll be on the docket a little bit later, and some of the outstanding policies that are really left to finish up are the personnel benefit policy, Mr. Salvatore, I believe, was working on the district nutrition and physical activity, eligibility requirements for the middle and the high school, school community relations, and updating on school volunteers given the charges that are being levied now. Not sure how that was resolved exactly by the police department for the background checks. And I'll leave it to Mr. Fiorello to set his next agenda.
Thank you. Next item is achievement and communications subcommittee update. Committee has not met, and under Mrs. Teal's chair, I'm sure we'll be meeting on the regular Tuesday schedule, but not yet to be determined at this point.
No, I'm working on an agenda for the beginning of the year. It seems we're kind of all busy between November and December. We'll start up next January.
Perfect, thank you. Next item is public hearing, reading of policies. I'm going to turn that over to Mrs. Teal. We have a few policies this evening. We have two new policies and appear six amended policies. We'll hold public comment at the end of the, just the general highlights of the policies. Mrs. Teal?
So we do have two new policies for the first reading. The first policy is G-12, which is professional responsibility for certified professionals. Mrs. Bolio provided us with an updated draft. It brings the compliance in, or I'm sorry, it brings the district in compliance with RIDE and the Rhode Island Code of Professional Responsibility. The policy was approved on a two-to-one vote. Mr. Salvatore voted in the negative, and I would like to read, have that policy read into the record as G-12 professional responsibility for certified professionals, and this will be the first reading. Two readings will be required. And then the second policy is G-13, teacher standards. This policy also brings the district in compliance with Rhode Island professional teaching standards, and it will sort of further help the school districts set high expectations for our teachers to fully implement the common core and to continue to provide outstanding teaching and learning. This policy was approved three to zero, and I would ask that it be read into the record as G-G-13, teacher standards. As for amended policies, we had a number of the policies that were updated. The first policy that was amended, and these, this policy was approved as amended on three to zero vote, is policy G-6, personnel benefit policy for non-United administrators and support personnel. We updated that policy to now include the athletic director and updated the salaries. It also included a limit of $500 for tuition reimbursement that had been kind of an open-ended reimbursement, and Dr. Thornton requested that that now be limited to $500. And we updated some others, just the language. So on a three to zero vote, I would like G-G6, personnel benefit policy for non-United administrators and support personnel be read into the record. The next policy is I-2, computer internet electronic device acceptable use, and this policy will now be cross-referenced as G-G14 because it applies to not only the students but also teachers and support personnel. So it would be G-14, computer internet electronic device acceptable use. That policy was updated because we needed to start taking into consideration the district's desire for one-to-one computing, so we needed to update some references to the Cumberland School Department, CSD. We need to kind of change the language about prohibiting the bringing in students of, prohibiting students from bringing in their own devices, so there has been some language changes where students can now bring in their own devices, so we can fully implement one-to-one computing. But there was some strong language written about not bypassing through our security system so that students are not surfing the web, surfing the internet, or doing things that are inappropriate during the school day. So that policy, as amended, was approved three to zero, so I would ask that both I-2 and G-14, computer internet electronic device acceptable use, be read into the record. J-18 was updated, that was school attendance areas and boundary lines. This just, it was a very old policy, and we just updated some language and including that it's up, if additional students entered the school system late in the year after sort of class sizes have been structured, that the superintendent, at this point, Dr. Thornton, would use his best educational judgment to decide where those students are placed because they may not be able to be placed at that time in their current, or in their local schools, and they may have to be placed elsewhere in the district. That policy was approved on a three to zero vote, so I would ask that J-18, school attendance areas, boundary lines, be read into the record. J-19, student automobile, this was another 1970s oldie but goodie. This was approved on a three to zero vote. We updated some language. We talked about how parking is a privilege, and that privilege can be revoked due to inappropriate behavior, and that we strongly encourage students to use the footbridge or the crosswalk when crossing amended road if they park across the street so that we not have parking, or parking, so that we don't have any safety issues or traffic issues anymore. We have a bit of an issue about that early in the school year. So J-19, student automobile use was approved as amended on a three to zero vote. I would ask that that be read into the record. J-20 is the student dress code. That code was also very interesting reading from the 1970s, so that's been updated to sort of reflect more what's going on currently. We would request that the handbooks be updated. I know in the high school and sometimes, I believe, in the middle schools, they reference this policy, or they actually may actually include language of the old policy, so they just let the handbooks reflect this new policy. This policy also was approved as amended on a three to zero vote, so I would ask that J-20, student dress code, be read into the record. And finally, before I run out of breath, K-4, school home communications. This has to do with all of the materials that are distributed in our kids' backpacks or whatnot, and we're trying to go a little more green, so we're trying to ask that most information be distributed electronically, but if there are things that need to be distributed via the backpack, especially at the elementary school level, that you will get the principal and the superintendent to have approval before anything goes out so that we're not sending sort of unsolicited information to our students and their families. So on a three to zero vote, K-14, school home communications, was approved, and I would ask that that be read into the record. Thank you.
Still a job, Mrs. Teal, thank you. So we have a number of policies, G-12, G-13, G-6, I-2, cross-referenced as G-14, J-18, J-19, J-20, and K-4. I will call the public hearing open for the public comment around those policies and ask if anyone is here to speak on those policies this evening. No, guess they're not here for that. I will call the public hearing closed at this time. Thank you, Mrs. Teal.
And again, I just have to say one last time, everybody's here, I'm going to say it again and again, but it's been a lot of work, it's been really fun, thank you, but I just really want to say a heartfelt thanks to Dr. Thornton and his team for going through this policy manual with us and getting this updated so that we have good policies on which to base the administration of school districts. Thank you very much.
I'd thank just Teal because without her, it wouldn't have happened. Just touch on it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I know the first time I was on the committee, we asked for the policy manual, and you got this big, giant hard copy, and you couldn't take it out of the department. You had to sit there and read it if you were so inclined, and many of the policies were from the 70s and 80s, so we were woefully out of date, and we were probably woefully out of compliance with respect to our school policies, and they're much more up-to-date and progressive, so thank you. Thank you, both.
Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. Anyone here wish to speak during comments of the public? If you don't mind, just state your name for the record.
Sure, thank you. My name is Ed Ritchie. First, I'd like to welcome the committee tonight to their first night of their new session. We are here tonight, and I know there's not a lot of time, so I'm not going to speak a lot because there's a number of girls, as you see behind me, that would like to address the board about an issue that's very important to them and everybody else that's standing behind me, and that's Girls, Cumberland High School Girls Hockey Team, which is a co-op team with Lincoln High School, which has been recognized by the state going into its third year. Tonight, later on, there was an email sent to all the committee members, which is a brief overview of why we're here tonight. The reason that was sent to the committee members was so we don't waste a lot of time, kind of giving them a flavor of what is going on. So I hope that, you know, with committee members' convenience, they'll take a look at that, and so they'll have a better idea of what the perspective and background is of the Cumberland Girls Hockey Team. The reason we're really here tonight is to get this on the agenda for next Tuesday's budget, so it can be posted properly so the public can come in, the taxpayers of Cumberland express either their disapproval or approval of a budget issue of Cumberland hockey. And although on its face it's a budget issue, it's really about a budget between the athletic department budget and fairness between boys and girls. I had the opportunity with two other parents to meet with Dr. Thornton yesterday. He was kind enough to meet for over an hour with us, and in that hour, he expressed what I understand is his support for Cumberland Girls Hockey. He did state to us that he is going to express his position when you do the closed doors budget about this past bill that is owed to the school department in Lincoln. Our hope is that Dr. Thornton expressed to the committee his position of going forward. I would like to tell to the committee that Lincoln School Committee, Lincoln parents, Lincoln students, Cumberland parents, Cumberland students here behind me are all willing to work on this issue. We're not going to be ignorant to stand here and ask for this committee that we want 30,000, 40,000, whatever the number may be. What we're asking for is that the committee put this on the agenda, give us a fair opportunity to state the case, to have some type of budget for girls hockey to share. This is it. If this issue is not resolved, is not put on the agenda Tuesday, is not resolved one way or another Tuesday, there is no girls hockey for these, for these girls behind us and the girls in Lincoln, and they're just not athletes, they're student athletes. I think if you look at these girls behind us, you'll see a number of high academic achieving students, and without the sports, and Dr. Thornton will state this also, it's a very important part of their academic studies is the athletic sports, and most of these girls here have escaped since they were four years old. And without this, without some resolution come next Tuesday, because Lincoln meets, their school committee meets on Monday, without some resolution, the hockey season will be canceled as of Wednesday. And then once it's canceled, I firmly believe there's going to be no opportunity for these girls to proceed forward in the next two years. It's just not going to happen. This is the time that we need to address it. And on behalf of the parents, I'm stating, we are willing to work to come to some resolution. But until this is on the agenda and we all sit down and come to some resolution about the funding of girls hockey, it's just not going to happen. I really appreciate that, and you can least support us in the sense, not only to listen to the girls tonight, to read the emails that you received tonight, but to really put this on the agenda for Tuesday. And I know I don't have a lot of time, and I could talk a lot, but I'm going to leave it up to the girls, yeah.
I'm speaking as a hockey mom, so you better watch out now. Just kidding, girl, I'm kind of wacky. Good evening, my name is Maureen Stimson. My daughter, Anya Stimson, is a junior at Cumberland High School and a proud member of the Cumberland-Lincoln Girls Ice Hockey Co-op. I have been a taxpayer resident of Cumberland for the past 23 years. I've also taught elementary school for 30 years and realize the financial constraints of operating within a school budget and the real difficulty of finding monies mid-street in the middle of the game. Of the 11 girls sitting behind me or standing behind me right now, there are women, young women of integrity. More than half of the girls standing behind me have been part of Peer Pals, a program at Cumberland High School that offers their time voluntarily during the school year and the school day to be assistants in the special education classrooms. Many of these girls have also signed up for the Best Buddies Program, a new pilot program here at Cumberland High School, in order to provide a kind of cooperative friendship for special ed students who are starting to exit Cumberland High School because of their age, and maybe to address some kind of cooperative or friendship issue where they can establish friendships or community bonds with special ed students from Cumberland from years to come. Five of the girls behind me are Friday volunteers, coaches for Special Olympics. They give up every Friday afternoon, and they are girls that help out one or two Special Olympic candidates in order to prepare for the state Special Olympics at the University of Rhode Island and the regionals at Bryant University. They're girls with true grit. As part of the Cumberland School Committee, you are probably very familiar with the school-wide program on the same page that was instituted by your principal, Mr. Terrero, this summer. The goal The goal was for all the students, freshmen through seniors, to read the same piece, the same book. The book that was chosen ironically was Pay It Forward. This book is based on a true story, a boy named Trevor McKinney. The premise of the book is that Trevor, a middle age, a middle school class, a middle school student, sorry, gives money to people to go out and do great things. And all he asks is that when they realize their successes, they in turn pay it forward by giving the monies to other people. Pay It Forward has become a common theme at Cumbly High School. Often, Mr. Terrero says it in the morning announcements or on the Gmails I receive every day from him. It was the theme of Spirit Week on most of the kids' t-shirts. The underlying concept is that we owe the responsibility to the whole community. When I teach a concept in school, the true test is that the students own it at the end. Well, now it's our turn. If we truly are gonna pay it forward, we need to find the group, we need to find the funding, we need to find the money that this ice hockey team needs. And in turn, these girls will go out and pay it forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Cunningham, and I'm a junior here at the high school. More importantly, I'm a member of the Lincoln-Cumbly Girls Hockey Team. That group of 12 girls means more to me than anything. I consider them my family, each and every one. And to quote Money Does, a team isn't a bunch of kids out to win. A team is something you belong to, something you feel, something you have to earn. I have learned so much from the sport of hockey that no classroom could ever teach me. I have learned commitment, discipline, sacrifice, dedication, and that hard work actually does pay off. During my freshman year, I was hit from behind while fighting for the state championship. I received a serious concussion that kept me out of the game I love for a year and a half. Sitting on that bench, game after game, in sneakers and not skates killed me. But what kills me even more is the thought that I might not be able to play this season. What kept me sane that whole entire season was the thought that I could play this season, and now I can't. I spent hours training, working hard, so I could come out this season and win for my girls. But now, if you guys could get away, all that would be a waste. I understand there's a lot behind keeping this team, and I understand that hockey is an extremely expensive sport, but it's worth the investment. I speak for the team when I say we'll do anything to keep this team. And if we need to fundraise more fundraisers, we've done it for other sports, and we can keep doing it for this sport. Please allow us to keep our team.
Hi, my name is Anya Stimson, and I'm a junior here at Cumbly High School and a lifelong resident of Cumbly. I would like to ask you to reconsider your decision and make room in the Cumbly-Lincoln, make room in the budget for the Cumbly-Lincoln Cooperative Girls Ice Hockey Team. The hockey team means more than anything to me. I stepped on the ice at the age of four and have not stopped playing since then. A year ago, I made one of the biggest decisions of my life so far, and that was switching schools from Mount St. Charles Academy to Cumbly High School. When I came here, the only girls I knew were on the hockey team. They took me under their wing and truly made me part of the family. The decision I made a year ago was one of the best decisions I've ever made. I have met so many amazing teammates, and I could not imagine life without them. I hope you take this into consideration when making your decision, and thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Cassidy Smansky. I'm reading this on behalf of our captain, Cassidy D. Pill, of the Lincoln. Have you ever loved someone or something more than you have loved yourself? Has something ever made you so happy that you couldn't help but smile ear to ear every time you thought of it? I have. I love my teammates more than anything in the world, so much so that I would do anything for. The thing is, these girls are not just my teammates during the couple of months we play together, but they are my sisters 24/7, all day, every day. We have experienced our ups. We've experienced our ups playing in the state championships at Brown University and our downs watching my teammates, sisters, and former captain Lauren Herdum sit on the bench for half this year because of a broken leg. No matter if it was good or bad, we stayed together. When I began playing for this team four years ago, I had no idea the impact it would have on me. I knew I loved hockey, but that was the extent of it. In fact, when I first started, the main thing on my mind was all of the parties I would miss on Friday and Saturday nights and all the dates I would have to turn down because I can't, I have hockey. Now, looking back, none of that mattered. Sure, I missed a few school dances here and there. Sure, I lost a few friends because I was always busy, but none of that could compare to the, compared to the absolutely amazing experience I have had on the ice with my girls. We've laughed together, cried together, hell, we even showered together. How many teams can say they've done that? This bond, this friendship, is what has helped me make it through all the struggles every high school girl has ever been through. Without this team, I don't know where I would be. As the captain of this team, I feel almost like the mother hen, and to have a picture of my girls who started over this, begin no more, is something I hope I never have to do. I understand that you are all in a difficult spot, but please do not punish us, do not punish my sisters. Hockey is not just a game, it is a lifestyle, and we are not just teammates, we are family.
Hi, my name is Rachel Havland, and I'm a junior at Cumbly High School. I made the decision last year to step out of my comfort zone and onto the ice, which was something I had wanted to do for a while, and I haven't looked back since. The team accepted me even though I had never played and joined halfway through the season. I walked into the locker room at the end of my first, at the night of my first practice, only knowing one or two people, and ended the season with this team that is now like a family to me. The best thing in the world is being able to do something you love with the people that you love, and that's what we were doing when we were on the ice. We laughed together, we cried together, and no matter what, we always have each other's backs. Starting hockey is one of the best decisions I've ever made, and that is because of my teammates. Thank you for your time.
Good evening and hello, my name is Jessica Lat, and I'm a senior at Lincoln High School. Our reason for being here tonight is clear. We don't want such a great organization to come to an end. These girls have grown together and learned so much about life and the importance of teamwork that none of us can imagine it all ending. I'd like to begin by telling you my own personal story, a story that I value and believe to be who I am and who I become in the six and three years. For my college essay, I was told to count incident or time that I experienced failure, how did it affect me, and what lessons did I learn. I've always been the type of person who sets very outrageous goals for themselves. I thrive off a great challenge, and so when a friend came to me about joining Lincoln High School in Cumbly's first girls' ice hockey team, I was instantly hooked. At the start of my hockey career, I was not at all good. I first started skating back in my freshman year of high school, the first year ever for the girls' hockey team. I had never skated or played hockey in my life, nor have I received any training, but this sport has always been something that I have held dear to my heart. I will never forget my first practice. I was so confident in myself that I was going to do great. 4:00 AM, bright and early, I rolled out of bed and prepared myself for the day. The weight between the car right there, introduction speeches, and putting on equipment that I had no idea how to put on was agonizing to say the least, but it was only going to get worse. I skated out onto the very slippery ice with skates three sizes too big and not the proper equipment. My vision of how this morning was supposed to be going quickly diminished as I fell right onto the cold, hard ice. I remember saying to myself, what am I doing? All of these girls are amazing, they can skate so fast, I don't belong here. But through those thoughts and the experience, I've learned the most important things, perseverance, determination, and commitment. As a couple of practices had gone by, problems have even turned out. I struggled to keep up with the other girls, and the stress of that took a toll on my grades, leaving me essentially being unable to play. I didn't quit, I just told myself I needed to get better before I get back on. I went public skiing every weekend throughout the entire hockey season and the summer, and I went to skating workshops to help gain new skills. I wanted to be a part of the team so incredibly bad, and I just kept pushing myself. With any hockey team, you can see the effort that each and every player puts in and the fight that they put up until the last second. I would watch how they skated up and down the ice, constantly making plays, always watching with their heads up, looking for the prime opportunity to put the puck in. That shot that comes off a greatly executed play, one that rockets through the air into the net, watching that occur and those teammates celebrating after a goal that came from hard work drove me to not give up. But I had to learn that with anything, it takes a great deal of time to reach perfection. I needed to figure out how to skate before I even got a handle on what hockey was. I had to overcome many fears before I felt comfortable enough to push off and skate. To be a part of the Lincoln and now Cumbly High School's girls' hockey team is the world's dream. I have written beyond words, and they have become a family to me. To this day, I'm not even forced to where I want to be, and I shouldn't be. In my mind, I must take from my failures and learn from them. I need to always have it in my mind and heart to push myself to be the best I can be. Through sophomore year and junior year, I have put my all into training. I know I may not be an amazing player, but that is not always important because I have the heart and the will to succeed, as many of these girls do. As for my final year of playing, I'm looking forward to giving my all to the greatest sport in the world. None of this will happen without your support. Thank you for your time.
Sorry. So there's this hockey player, his name's Rick Wellington. He, he's actually here, he's been skating since he was four, and he has always had this interest in the Cumbly Boys Hockey Team. He set a goal for himself a long time ago, and he stuck to it. He wanted to be captain, he wanted to play first line and everything like that, and he set his goals and he achieved it. He became captain his junior year and led his team to a championship with the stats of 27 wins and one loss. He became the MVP and is now leading his team into the next season. I set that same goal when I was little, too, but I've had that opportunity taken away from me because of lack of money and stuff like that. I recently came from Mount St. Charles to come play with my team, play for my town, and make new friends and stuff like that, and now I can't. I've, I've never played on this team, but during like regular season, but I've, I've played against them, and I had the honor of playing with them this summer. I've never seen a team more dedicated or more like a family. They just brought me in and made me feel welcome, even though I did not know any, like most of them except for maybe two. And they made me feel welcome and like I was already part of the team. And I'll always be grateful for that because coming into a new school, knowing no one and anything like that, and having a team behind me was just an amazing feeling. And I will always be grateful for that. And hockey is our life. For most of us, we've been playing since we were really young, like we learned how to walk and then we put on skates. And we just learned, and that has been our life. It's been, hockey is just not like a one-season thing. It, it takes up winter, fall, spring, and summer. It shows dedication, and from that dedication, you see like success and everything like that. And this team has only been around for a short amount of time, but I've seen so much success from them, and I am proud of them. Even though I may have not known many of them, I'm proud to call them my teammates now, and I hope that I can be on the ice for them this season.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's James Isabella, and I'm a resident of Lincoln, and my daughter plays with these girls. And I didn't prepare anything for tonight, I wasn't even gonna get up and speak, but after listening to these girls talk, I mean, I coached them this summer, and my God, I can remember Anya pushing a cone when she was four years old. I remember my daughter skating with Cassidy when she was six. And just after listening to Samantha talk, I mean, she started this summer with these girls, and, you know, she played against them the last couple of years, but when she said they took her in as a family, they really did. These girls truly love each other. A girl that was their goaltender last year, Jamie Gagia, she's up at Plymouth State, and I can't tell you how many times I walked by my daughter's room, and she's FaceTiming, you know? Because they built these friendships that are absolutely incredible. And it would be a travesty to these girls if you take this away from her, really would. It's, it's more than hockey, it's, it's life, and like I said, these girls have been friends forever. I've had a bunch of them over my house, and they're just great kids, they're athletes and they're students as well. And anything you could do to, to help us out would be, would be great, and like Mr. Ritchie said, we'd be more than willing to work as hard as we can. Because these girls work hard, they're up a couple of mornings a week early, and it's a lot of work. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Speak up. Okay.
In addition, I have this letter that I sent out, and I, and I hit a lot of the emails, but I don't think I had everybody. So what shall I do with each other right now? It's for...
You're more than welcome to, I'm happy to forward it along.
Oh, yeah, because you have a, your doctor's copy.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to take a look at it. But I'm happy to forward that.
Yeah, thank you. So I guess I just want to reiterate, since I have an opportunity here, and Ritchie was very succinct, there's a lot of passion here with what everyone was saying, kids were saying, with what all the parents were saying. A lot of parents couldn't be here tonight, a lot of kids couldn't be here tonight, but there's a real interest here. It's a real shame if we take this away. These kids have been working all year to get back on the ice in this next coming week. So hopefully we get on our agenda for Tuesday.
Linda Havland.
I didn't sign the letter. Thank you. All right, last call. Okay. So I just have a few remarks. I always appreciate the passion of our athletes because they certainly come, we've had the swim team come, we've had middle school parents and their students come. It's passionate. What we've seen with Cumbly students and now Lincoln students welcome to our meeting is this energy about what you feel very strongly about, and there's this element of gracious professionalism. And it's very nice to see that because I do think this is a wonderful town, and we raise wonderful kids and educate wonderful kids here. The compounding problem that the committee has to face is it was not a funded sport. We've been in the situation with a few of our sports where they haven't been funded. Lacrosse is one. It was a five-year reign before we finally were able to bring them in as a funded activity. In addition, we've also had middle school sports cut and then recently brought back into our budget. And then lastly, because it wasn't a funded sport and there was no payment made, we now have three times, twice or three times the problem. I know it was paid per student, you started with a few number of students, and now you're a larger team, which I applaud the interest and the enthusiasm for, but we have two problems. We have the old bill, and we would have a new bill. We do know that the committees had the opportunity to add this to the budget. It wasn't one of the priorities for the budget. Any member could have done that, it wasn't done. So it would remain, if Lincoln were to approve it, a self-funded sport. That would be what I believe would happen, assuming that no activity occurs at any future meeting. We will refer this to fiscal management for Tuesday. We'll work with fiscal chair, Demodica, to agenda it appropriately, but we do want to be good partners with Lincoln. We do know that they're Cumbly students, and Lincoln has done the yeoman's work of putting the team together, and their athletic director, I'm sure, has done a huge amount of effort toward that, and obviously, there's been great success. So we will post it accordingly. It's not an ideal situation, as we're all aware, it's, the bill is significant for years past, and moving forward, it would be just as substantial. So we have been in touch with the superintendent in Lincoln, and we're trying to get all of the relevant financial data for our fiscal management meeting. So that's about all I can really say about it, just to give you a general summary. I know it's difficult because it's not on our agenda, but I did think, given the nature of the issue, you'd want to know, and the last thing you want to do is to try and figure out where, you know, where they posted their agenda. So we will agenda it for fiscal on, on Tuesday. So, Mr. Salvatore?
I just wanted to say I appreciate the passion to see everybody come out. I graduated from Lincoln High School, but I've been in Cumbly for 17 years. I like the synergy between the two. Because when I went to Lincoln High School, it was a little rivalry.
Because when I went to Lincoln High School, it was a little rivalry. I don't know if there's any parents here who are Cumberland seventeen years ago. Don't make that joke. Don't make me not graduate. Wow. So it was a rivalry. I think somebody from Cumberland stole our, our mascot. So I, you know, we take stuff like, at least I take stuff, I'm sure the committee does as well, professionally and we weigh things out, we look at it as a whole, especially as a community. So I just wanted to thank everybody for their passion. It's nice to see a turnout like this in front of the committee and expressing your views on how it is. I, I'll tell people all the time, they'll complain, I'll have an issue, I say, we'll bring it in front of the whole committee. You have the superintendent, assistant superintendent, you have a legal here and the whole committee. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, we have new business. Next-gen personalized learning grant presentation and letter.
Thank you, Madam Chief. Good evening, everyone. Should I wait for a minute? You're missing a really good part. Well, good evening again, everyone. This, this past summer, Mr. Padofo Costa, who was here this evening, one of our assistant principals at the high school, Mr. Temeraro, the principal of the high school, Amanda Latoyl, an interdisciplinary coordinator at the high school, and I attended a personalized learning conference in Mississauga. It was outstanding and the whole goal was to really focus on what we as educators can do to meet the individual needs of all students. I think we're doing a better job of that all the time. However, there's always work to do in that area. And the whole goal of the conference was to help schools and districts from around New England to apply for this personalized learning grant. And Cumberland High School is in the running to actually get a Gates Foundation personalized learning grant. And Mr. Costa is here to share some information with all of you about our thinking in applying for this grant. But the, we wanted to share something with you called "The Myth of Average" by Todd Rose. This video really laid a foundation for the whole three-day conference and we've had a chance to show it one other time to the, to the school committee or to some members of the school committee. And I also shared it with our leadership team at our retreat this summer. And it is provocative and it really makes you think about our responsibility as educators to meet the individual needs of every single student because we're all very different. So with that, we'll show the video and then Mr. Costa will present the application.
I'm just removing my whole, any savings that you just sent him.
Okay, that's okay.
It's 1952 and the Air Force has a problem. They've got good pilots flying better planes, but they're getting worse results. They don't know why. For a while, they blamed the pilots. They even blamed the technology. They eventually got around to blaming the flight instructors. But it turned out that the problem was actually with the cockpit. Let me explain. Imagine you're a fighter pilot. You're operating a machine that in some cases can travel faster than the speed of sound and where issues between success and failure, sometimes life and death, can be measured in split seconds. If you're a fighter pilot, you know that your performance depends fundamentally on the fit between you and your cockpit. Because after all, what good is the best technology in the world if you can't reach the critical instruments when you need them the most? But this presents a challenge for the Air Force because obviously pilots are not the same size. So the issue is, how do you design one cockpit that can fit the most individuals? For a long time, it was assumed that you could do this by designing for the average pilot. That almost seems intuitively right. If you designed something that fit for the average-sized person, wouldn't it fit most people? It seems right, but it's actually wrong. And sixty years ago, an Air Force researcher, Gilbert Daniels, proved to the world just how wrong this really is and what it was costing us. Here's how he did it. He studied over four thousand pilots and he measured them on ten dimensions of size. And he asked a very simple question. How many of these pilots are average on all ten dimensions? The assumption was that most of them would be. Do you know how many really were? Zero. Gilbert Daniels proved there was no such thing as an average pilot. Instead, what he found was that every single pilot had what we call a jagged size profile, right? Means not, it means, I mean, you're not, no one's at the same on every dimension. And this makes sense, just because you're the tallest person doesn't mean you're the heaviest, doesn't mean you have the broadest shoulders or the longest torso. But this is tricky because if every pilot has a jagged size profile and you design a cockpit on average, you've literally designed it for no one. So the Air Force realized they had a problem and their response was bold. They banned the average. Meaning that moving forward, they refused to buy fighter jets where the cockpit was designed for an average-sized pilot. And instead, they demanded that the companies who built these planes designed them to the edges of dimensions of size. Meaning that rather than design for, say, the average height, they wanted the cockpit that could accommodate as close to the shortest pilot and the tallest pilot as the technology would allow. Now, the companies that made these planes, as you could imagine, weren't happy, right? They argued and lobbied and they said, it's gonna be impossible, or at least impossibly expensive, to build a flexible cockpit. But once they realized that the Air Force wasn't going to budge, suddenly it was possible and it turned out it wasn't that expensive. And in fact, they made great strides leveraging simple solutions that we all take for granted in our everyday lives, like adjustable seats. And as a result, the Air Force not only improved the performance of the pilots that they already had, but they dramatically expanded their talent pool. Today, we have the most diverse pool of fighter pilots ever, but here's the thing, many of our top pilots would have never fit in a cockpit designed on average. So, most of us have never sat in the cockpit of a $150 million fighter jet, right? But we've all sat in a classroom. And I would argue... I would, I would argue that these are the cockpits of our economy. And I think we all know that we have some problems. We're spending more money than ever before, but we're getting worse results. Whether we're talking about declining test scores in math and science or a dropout crisis, you probably know that we have over 1.2 million dropouts every single year in high school in this country. What you may not know is that at least four percent of those dropouts are known to be[1242.85][1242.88]intellectually gifted. That means we're losing over 50,000 of our brightest minds every single year. So we know we have a problem, but do we know why? So far, we've been content to blame the students. We blame the teachers. We even blame the parents. But here's the thing, I think back to the Air Force example and I can't help but wonder how much of this problem is just bad design? Here's what I mean. Even though we have one of the most diverse countries in the history of the world and even though it's the 21st century, we still design our learning environments like textbooks for the average student. No kidding. We call it age-appropriate and we think it's good enough, but of course it's not. I mean, think about it. What does it even mean to design for an average student? Because a student is not one-dimensional like struggling to gift it. Students vary on many dimensions of learning, just like they vary on dimensions of size. Here are a few obvious ones. And just like size, each student, every single one of them, has a jagged learning profile. Meaning they have strengths, they're average in some things, and they have weaknesses. We all do. Even geniuses have weaknesses. But if the fighter pilot example has taught us anything, it's this. If you design those learning environments on average, odds are you're designing for So no wonder we have a problem. We've created learning environments that because they are designed on average, cannot possibly do what we expected them to do, which is nurture individual potential. But think about what that really costs us. Because every single student has a jagged learning profile, it means that the average hurts everyone, even our best and brightest. Even for them, designing on average destroys talent in at least two ways. First, it makes your talent a liability. We all know kids like this, so unbelievably gifted in one area, that their educational environment can't challenge them. We also know what happens. They get bored and a shockingly high number of them drop out. The second way that the, designing on average destroys talent is that it means your weakness will make it hard for us to see, let alone nurture, your talent. We all know kids like this as well. Like the kid who was gifted in science, but who's a below-average reader. Because our science textbooks assume that every kid is reading at grade level, this kid's in trouble. Because for her, science class is first and foremost a reading test. And it's doubtful that we will ever see what she's truly capable of. Now, it's one thing when our technology does not allow us to do anything other than average, but it is a whole nother thing when the technology changes and we can do more, but we don't realize it. That's where we are today. In the last few years, education, just like the rest of society, has gone digital. If you don't believe me, just consider this fact. U.S. public schools are one of the largest buyers of iPads in the world, right? So the question isn't, do you want the technology? It's already here, you've already paid for it. The question is, what do you want it to be? This is where it really gets exciting. We have a chance right now to use this technology to create learning environments that are so flexible that they truly can nurture the potential of every single individual. Now, you might think, that sounds expensive, right? Doesn't have to be. In fact, we can get a long way. We can make great strides with simple solutions that we take for granted in our everyday digital lives. Here I'm thinking about basic stuff like language translation, support for reading vocabulary, you know, even the ability of a machine to pronounce a word for you or read a passage if you want. Basic stuff. But while these are simple solutions, you'll be surprised at how big of an impact they actually have on the lives of individuals. I know I was the first time that I saw it happen. I was observing a fourth-grade classroom a few years ago and they were participating in a study where they were testing the effectiveness of a new digital science curriculum. Now, I'll be the first to say, this new digital version wasn't fancy. In fact, it was pretty basic. The thing that it had going for it, though, was that it did not assume that every student in that classroom was reading at grade level. Now, one of my favorite things about this particular classroom was the teacher because she hated technology. And I know this because it's the first thing that she told me when I met her. And my response was, okay, why did you sign up for a study that's about technology? She told me, she was willing to go through this in the hopes that it might help one kid in her class. His name was Billy. And Billy, as she told me, had a mind for science, but he was one of those kids who was a below-average reader. And she was hoping this might reach him now while he's still learning to read. And I have to say, that actually made me nervous because as I said, the techno, this technology was pretty basic and I didn't wanna disappoint her. So you can imagine how pleasantly surprised I was. About halfway through the study, the teacher reaches out to say, hey, guess what? Billy, not only has Billy taken to the technology, but I'm starting to see improvement in his performance. So that was nice. But nothing, nothing prepared me for what I saw when I went back to that classroom at the end of the study. Billy had become the de facto smartest kid in the class. No kidding. And everybody knew. In, in fact, the first thing that I saw when I walked through the door were six or seven kids huddled around Billy's desk, asking him questions about the assignment. And boy, did he have answers, it turns out. The thing is, all we really gave Billy and his classmates was a learning equivalent of adjustable seats. And in return, we got a glimpse of Billy's talent. And sure, you might say, well, look, that's one kid in one classroom. Then again, that's one kid in one classroom. And isn't that what it's actually about? Nurturing individual potential. Jonas Salk was one individual. He cured polio. What if Billy is the next Jonas Salk? What if the cure for cancer is in his mind? Who knows? But I do know that we came dangerously close to losing his talent before he even left grade school. Not because he didn't understand science, because he was still learning to read. And that's what I mean when I say that simple solutions can have a profound impact on individuals. So the real question to me is how do we get these adjustable seats for learning in the hands of every student as fast as possible without spending more money? Here, I actually think the Air Force has given us the formula for success. Here, I actually think the Air Force has given us the formula for success. What if we ban the average in education? We know it destroys talent. Instead, what if we demanded that the companies that sell these materials into our classrooms design them not to the average of dimensions of learning, but to the edges? It would be a bold move. It would certainly send a strong signal to the market. The game's changed. But trust me, if we do this, not only will we increase the performance of the kids in our classrooms today, we will dramatically expand our talent pool. Because right now, there are so many students we simply cannot reach because we design on average. Design to the edges, and we will reach them, and we'll get their talent. I have to say, I know, because I was one of those students. So today, I'm a faculty member at Harvard, but I'm also a high school dropout. It gets better. I was a high school dropout with a 0.9 GPA. For those of you who don't know, that's pretty bad. But here's the thing. I've been to the very bottom of our educational system. I've been to the very top. And I'm here to tell you, we are wasting so much talent at every single level. And the thing is, because for every one person like me, there are millions who worked as hard, who have the ability, but who were unable to overcome the drag of an educational environment designed on average. And their talent is forever lost to us. The thing is, we can't really afford to lose them. The good is, is we don't have to anymore. I'm telling you, we have a once-in-a-lifetime chance, right now, to fundamentally reimagine the very foundation of our institutions of opportunity like education in ways that nurture the potential of every single individual, therefore expand our talent pool, make us far more competitive in the world. We can do this. We know the formula, and it's time we demand it. Thank you.
So I hope you found that to be interesting. So the challenge for us, really the question for us is, how do we respond to the Billies that we have in the Cumberland School District? And Mr. Costa is going to share the thinking behind the grant application that we have for this Chamberlain Foundation personalized learning.
And I'll do this really quickly. You watched the video in... I'd just like to say, much of our inspiration when we thought about what we can do here at school so we can design those programs that would hit every student who walks through our doors. Todd Rosa's speech in "The Myth of Average" was definitely our inspiration. If you look up here right now at this board, to the right or to your left, you'll see what we have as our traditional schedules right now. Seven schedules rotating to drop off every day. Not much flexibility in our schedule. Students who have to take literacy on university do not have much choice on what their schedule looks like. So, and one of the things that they asked to do early on at the Summer Institute was think about our students, think about who walks through our school. And we thought, right from the top student that we have, right to the student that we couldn't get to graduation but might have quit, might have dropped out of school. And in designing this plan, we really do believe we have designed something that, to the edges, that will protect everyone, or at least will include everyone, and they will be able to determine what their pathway here at school will look like. So we took a seven-period schedule. So some of the main components of our plan are, first of all, we considered a summer program for incoming 8th graders. Currently, we're going to move that students are going to need to have 24 credits to graduate Cumberland High School. And we believe by getting 8th graders three credits early on, we can open up flexibility within their schedule, 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. And doing so, they will be able to decide on things like, even when they graduate, they could graduate after 11th grade or sometime during the middle of the year, and stop moving on to other things. So if we just look at the other... So when you look at the schedules here to your right, what you notice is a much different-looking schedule. We've gone now from a seven-period schedule drop 2 to a 4x4 block A-B. And what that allows us to do is, students who might finish school early, for example, Student C down there, you'll notice is taking all E.P. classes. Fitness and conditioning is a requirement for graduation. But on that B-day, because they've already met all of their graduation requirements, that student would be eligible to go out and maybe work on a political campaign if they wished. If you look over at Student C, Student C's second part of both A-B day would be spent at New England Tech, maybe working on an associate's degree. Even Student A, if we look at Student A right there, Student A could be a student who has trouble waking up, constantly getting consequences for coming into school late. But because they have those credits from that summer bridge program in 8th grade, we can have a flexible schedule for them, where they're coming in only for the second period of the day, finishing out the day. All of a sudden, their stress about coming to school, receiving consequences for coming in late, are gone, and that student is apt to do better. So we believe by looking at things like that summer bridge program, where students could potentially get three credits coming in, and a more, I'm going to say rigid, but it allows us to be more flexible with the schedule. I mean, a student could pretty much finish up by their 11th grade year, and their senior year could be spent the whole year receiving an associate's degree, some certification programs virtually, using our courses online. They could be doing internships. There are things that they could even do within the school. So we have already passed the first stage of the grant. We're now moving into the second stage of the grant. And one of the things that they're looking for is they're looking for a commencement letter, which Mr. Tenero has already drafted. You have it? So, and that commencement letter will be sent out to the Next Gen Personalized Learning Grant Competition. So that's what I'm here asking for you today.
Mr. Costa, yes, I have to thank you. I like your chart. It brings me back to the old-school way of presenting. Usually, you know, before you took that out, I was getting ready to look over here for a PowerPoint, and then I saw your chart, and I saw...
Yeah, it was actually part of the plan, the rawness of it, and like, it's still at its infancy stage. And this is something that we actually hovered around the table and worked on as a group, so we wanted to present it that way.
Can you tell me a little bit about the grant a little bit more? Can you expand on it?
Sure. Cumberland is one of 41 League of Innovative Schools, and because we are a member of that organization, we are allowed to put an application in for a Gates Grant, which, and their goals for this is really to get high schools to personalize more within the classroom as well as the structure. So even like scheduling things, they want us to begin to look at classroom instruction, including technology, standards-based grading. So those are the types of things that we're currently doing, already so many of them, are heading in that direction, so...
Is this the first year for this grant? Or is this grant...
This would be the first time we received this grant.
Has it been, has anybody been awarded this grant prior?
I don't believe they have.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sorry about you. I'm not sure if anybody else has a question on the committee. Mr. Costa.
I apologize, I'm jumping a little late. I just want to say that this is before the Achievement and Communications Subcommittee. We did have the chance to watch the video. We also had that poster board, the one's a little bit smaller, so the visual on it, you can tell there's a huge amount of constructive thought that went into this process, and I'm sorry if I'm repeating what you've said, a system principle. But it really is about, you know, the speaker in the TED Talk talked about, you know, himself as an example. You've got those kids on those edges that are high, high, high-achieving kids, or kids who are tremendously struggling, who, kids who have these family commitments and obligations that prevent them from being 100% contributors in school, and this gives them that flexibility to do it. You know, I applaud all the work. I think, you know, based on what I've read, it's a wonderful opportunity, and it really gives all students the ability. And, you know, you'll certainly talk to parents over time who've said, you know, "It's just not working." And this gives them an opportunity and a flexibility, so you can make that work.
If I could add just one other thing. I think most importantly, too, is even within what we're looking at here in terms of maybe transforming the school a little bit, is there's still the ability for a student to have a very traditional path to a high school diploma. So we're not saying that you have to go out and get an internship, you have to be done with 11th, or high school by 11.5. There's still a very traditional path built into this.
Mr. Salvatore, my assistant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Costa, so one of 41 schools is going to get the grant?
No, one of 41 schools are members of the League of Innovative Schools. We, most of this, actually, a lot of the schools have already dropped out because of the timeline for the grant. We are one of the ones who went forward with it, and now we're moving on to...
Excellent, so we're in good shape.
We are in very good shape. The feedback that we've gotten from the New England Secondary Schools Consortium is mostly positive, very little in terms of cool feedback, but they're very happy because what happened was, a lot of the schools who submitted plans were tweaking very small things within their school, looking at an advisory period, but we were one of the few schools who really came up with a transformation plan.
In terms of sheer numbers, so we're probably one of a couple in Rhode Island, a few in Connecticut, a couple in Maine, it's a very short list right now.
Mrs. Teal, I just have a question about, if you're thinking about structure of the schedule. Is there consideration to doing summer school, not just between 8th and 9th grade, but to, for some students who, since they're very passionate about science, they need to be in a science environment where you've got access to chemistry through chemistry labs and the biology labs, but you want to get rid of math in the summer, or get through an English broke class or something. Are you thinking of doing that through all four years?
Yeah, we are such, we are at such a high view right now, and as I'm sure we get closer to a completed, we even consider by, could even an 8th grader, in 8th grade receive high school credit if they're ready to receive high school credit. So we would be, we would be looking at, open up all those types of opportunities.
And then I'm also assuming that you would also consider that for some students in 18th and 5th to get through high school?
Sure, absolutely.
So there's no real freshman to senior kind of...
Yeah, and we've, and we've talked about that as well, almost the elimination of the terms freshman, sophomore, it's first year, second year, because we would envision students finishing at all different times.
Excellent. I'm so thrilled you're working on this. Thank you. One final question. If you were to do the 8th grade bridge, would that start this...
We're hoping to start that this coming summer, yes.
Excellent. And often when parents hear the word "transformation," they think, "Oh, no, not another change." So how do we communicate that it's not so much a rebuilding of our school, you know, we're not blowing it up, starting from scratch, it's really offering kind of...
Yeah, I could understand the concern, but this would happen in increment steps where I don't even necessarily, I mean, I might be using that word incorrectly right now because we would be doing it in small steps, and now, obviously, a change in the schedule would be a pretty hefty move there, but other than that, we would first look at a summer program, then look at scheduling, so it wouldn't be transformation overnight.
You can still hear that, yes. But thank you very much. Wonderful. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is STEE, update for fiscal '15. Is that Dr. Thornton?
Pridnata. Yeah, good evening, members of the committee. I guess Dr. Thornton wanted me to update you on what STEE might look like next year. I went to a meeting last Friday down at Rye, and I got some handouts that were provided to us, and I made copies and put them on your desk while you were watching the video of airplane pilots. Anyhow, the first document that I want you to go through, it's the one that has like the Rhode Island little seal on it, looks like a PowerPoint. And it's just like, what it basically is, it's just a little refresher of how the formula works. So it's just a few slides in there. If you'll indulge me, I'll walk you through that before we go right to what the numbers look like. If you go to the second page, the funding formula components, we've talked about these in the past, there's three key components. The core instruction pupil, per pupil amount, which is an average that they derive from four New England states, that's Connecticut, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and New Hampshire. A student success factor, which is based on your free and reduced lunch, you get an additional 40% for each free and reduced student you have. So for core instruction was 89, 28. And the 40% number for free and reduced of 3,571, the numbers for next year would be added on to that, so it'd be, you know, just over $12,000 for free and reduced students. And then there's the third component, the quadratic equation that they have, which considers revenue generation and capacity of the communities, and student needs, and property values, and a whole host of things that go into that. If you just look down below, they provided a little example. For example, if you had 2,000 children, the students on the RADM that were making $8,928 per student based on the core instruction above, see, that'd be $17,856. If you had another 800 children that got the additional 40% of state, because they were free and reduced, you would end up with, I'll give you the amount, roughly 20, over $20 million, $20.6 million. And in this example, the state aid ratio they were using was 50%. You would take half of that, you'd get $10,356 would be your state aid. And they, next slide over, they show you how the state aid's being paid. So example, if you went from the $10,015 to the $10,356 they're showing, that change of $356,000, since we're going into the fifth year of the seven-year formula, that $356,000 would be spread out over the remaining three years, and you'd have $118,000 increases state aid each of those years. So your number next year would go from the $10,000, not to $10,356, it would go to $10,118, one-third of the remaining $356,000. And the next slide, basically, we just showed you the transition schedule. You see that it's shaded, the year five, we're moving into year five, there's three years left. That's for districts who gained state aid. If you recall, there were districts who lost, and they phased it, they gave them a little bit more of a break, they didn't take it away in seven years. They gave them 10 years to, you know, to see those reductions of state aid that they're They pointed out, the next slide, formula transition, you know, basically, they were pointing out that we're getting here towards the end of the formula, and pretty soon, whatever increases and decreases you have will be implemented immediately. There'll be no smoothing it out because there'll be no years left. If you have a $3 million, if you're a big district and you lost $3 million in state aid, it won't be a million dollars, over three, it'll be $3 million hit or gain would be an immediate increase. Factors that impact funding, obviously student enrollment, free and reduced-priced lunches, the core instruction, and the state share ratio updates. And that's that quadratic formula that takes into account things we mentioned, the property values, median family income, et cetera. And the student enrollment changes, increases in enrollment, you know, the student enrollment changes is a big driver of state aid, since money follows a child. Increases in enrollment, you know, things that help that, the implementation of full-day kindergarten, a new school or a grown school, you know, changes in free and reduced lunch, those are the... in free and reduced lunch, those, those type of things would all impact student enrollment. Student enrollment changes, they showed, they showed us that for the last four years, basically, the number of students in Rhode Island and public schools from 12 to 15 is pretty much, pretty level. There might be some swings in districts. But you see, we're at just about 141,012, and we're at 139, 449 at 15. The same with the free and reduced, you know, there was a, there was a spurt in it. And I think when, you know, when the economy is really probably at its worst, it went from 63,000 to 68. But you see, in 15, it's pretty much just, you know, almost the same number as 14, and I feel that's leveled off a little bit. The core instruction per pupil, the 8,928 that was shown in the example earlier to get to the $10,356 in state aid for that community, you can see what it's been the last several years. You can see it actually went down this year. So it was 8,966 last year, it's going to be 8,928. That number times our number of pupils to get what our state aid should be before it goes into that quadratic equation. Property values, median family income, they say there hasn't been significant changes, some maybe in individual communities, but overall in the state. And what they do is, they pointed out, they get this number from, I wrote a little note there, from municipal affairs, and they do a five-year average. So that comes from another state agency to Rye. And besides the state aid, there's also some categorical programs that, we don't participate in all of them, but they've been, they've been increasing education aid. So Dr. Thornton asked me earlier today, what was our state aid number next year? Well, it's 896, but there's also some of these categorical programs that get added in. So as, you know, they're phasing in, the state's going to be paying for transportation for charter school children and stuff like that. So that's being phased in over a five-year period. And there's the high cost of special ed, special ed students, which Dr. Caldwell and my office are working on. What they do is they take the number 62,000 change next year, any student that costs you more than that, you provide those numbers to the state. They take it statewide, they get that total of that number, and then they take a, you know, they proration it. So depending on how much, if Cumberland students, you know, and I don't know what the number is, but let's say we made up 3% of that statewide total, whatever the legislator's budget, we'd get 3% of that number. So, you know, they estimate that'll be $33,000 next year for us, so they're not really funding it, but it's, it's something that, that we do. And then, and then just talk the local share of charter schools, DAVs and stuff. They're talking about how, in that last category, what you do is you take your, to get the, to get the number, the number that we pay them, we always talk about the number we pay them for each student that goes to a charter school. But you get that number by taking the total local contribution that the town gives us. So they'll use it because their COA data is not quite up to, up to date, they use the 2013 numbers of the state now. So our number that year was 37,202. So that would be the number, total local contribution. It's just the money from the town, doesn't include any other revenue sources. You divide that by our public school students to get a per pupil, and then you take that per pupil, times the number of students to get a local share to charter DAVs, et cetera. That number next year, and you'll see it in one of my other slides, is going to be, with 69 changed this year, it's going to 7,221. And that's on one of the other sheets I've given you. So this is, you know, kind of like a little quick review of kind of how, you know, how some of the components work. The next sheet I would, I'd like you to go to is, kind of looks like this, it says at the top FY '16 projected education and dollar changes, looks kind of like this. And in that, you'll see, excuse me. Now, now I can see two. You'll see the first number, they're projecting next year for Cumberland, an $896,000 increase in state aid. $23,000 additional for the non-public transportation phase in, or phase out, you know, that we would be, a phase out for us not paying it. And maybe $33,165 for projected high-cost special ed aid. The negative 832147 is the amount that the state feels will, will be increased in charter school requirements to the students attended charter schools from Cumberland. And so the estimate is that we'll only receive an additional $120,449 when you factor in the charter schools in the state aid. If you go to the second page of that...
Alex, can I just stop you for one second?
Sure.
The projected year five local share, that's an addition, an additional amount. It's not, it's not a total amount.
No, that's like, we pay about 2.7 now. They're expecting it'll go to like 3.5 or something like that.
Thank you.
Go ahead. So if you go to the next sheet, you see the Cumberland, and you get, you can see the math. You see the first column, there's 4,402. We actually have about 4,480 kids right now, and they're estimating 78 additional kids to go to charter schools next year. So they take that number down to 4,402, times that core amount of 8,928, and you'll get that third column, 39,00301. The second column is the number of free and reduced kids in Cumberland. If you take that number and you multiply it times the 3,571 student success factor, you get that 3,792. And the two of them together are the 43,093. The next two columns, the percentage of free and reduced and the state share ratio, those are two numbers that get put into that quadratic equation, that come out of that. And when they run through that equation, you get that state share ratio quadratic mean of 42.5. That number times the 43 million, and that number's actually 18,314. But the 42.5, I was talking to Rye because the math didn't work, it's actually, that's all they're showing. There's other, it goes out three or four other decimals, so that's why it doesn't tie exactly. But that 18,303 would be the state funding upon full transition. We got 15 million last year. There's 2,689 left to receive to get to full funding. And that's how they get the 896, or 20 for next year. They take that 2,689, and they divide it by the three remaining years left of the formula, years five, six, and seven. So that's how you get the 896. The sheet behind that one is just, goes to show you the amounts that each district pays for their charter school kids. So I put a little asterisk near ours, I mentioned the 7,221. That's what we will pay for each student that goes to a charter school, or the men or DAVs next year. We have about 18, 19 kids that go to those two, those two schools. The last sheet, the last handout that I provided, I thought just would be for interest, you can, it basically lists every district in the state, alphabetically starting with Barrington, I think it ends with, probably with Socket. And you'll see the number of kids they have enrolled in charter schools, and at what charter schools. And you also get to see their local rate that they pay. Every, we pay the same amount each charter school, but each district, because of the funding formula and the quadratic mean and all the rest that goes into that, each district has a different local rate. So you see some of them are very, very low, like Central Falls, $2,638 a kid. And you see ours on page two, the 7,221. But it's interesting that districts that are, like Cranston's on the same page as Cumberland, they have over 9,000 students compared to our 4,400, but they have, you know, about half the kids in charter schools. And, you know, you can go through it and stuff, but you can see how, you know, Cumberland is one of the heaviest communities with kids in charter schools. And part of, you know, we've been, what we've been saying, and trying to get people to hear us, that, you know, this is a, this is a...
Just that, that sheet looking at disproportionately, I don't know what was in front of me. It's not from Central Falls, I'm entering the F2, second proportion of students going to return school versus the population.
So that, you know, that's all I have. Dr. Thornton wanted me to just give you the latest numbers. I will tell you that when we get our forecast last year, our three-year forecast that we shared with the council. We had estimated, we had gotten over $1 million last year on state aid, I think it was $1,501. So we estimated $1 million, so the $1 million is now 896. And I estimated, Dr. Thornton and I, at the time, about a growth of about half a million in charter school kids compared to the 823. So this is about a $380,000 worst case than the $1,001 gap that we kind of had last year at our upcoming budget cycle. So if everything else in that, and not everything else, obviously, because that was done in February, the number of numbers now change, and they have some better, some worse. But in that one instance, we thought we'd have a half a million dollar gain, instead of a $120,000 gain when you mesh charter schools and state aid together. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Pregnata? So Alex, this is a related topic. We had gone, placed an RFP for the BEP. It's my understanding that there weren't any responders. Correct? So given that, we still have the situation with regard to our questions around the BEP, can we consider hiring an auditing firm or something of that sort to take on that exercise for us? I mean, it's clear, this is a problem that is impacting. If the Department of Ed has said, you know what, Cumberland, we underfunded you, and you should have for your local appropriation, $896,000 more. And the town's not keeping up with that. We continue to put school departments' children in a compromised position. So even though the state has said, you know what, you have $800,000 more, the reality is we have another bill for $800,000. That is just a wash now, it's a $100,000 gain for us.
If you look at Lincoln, actually, you know, was also affected by, affected by the St. Charter School. We have a $353,000 reduction next year.
Yes.
They went through the BEP.
Can, can we consider a proposal that can come before the committee to hire a firm, an auditing firm, or what we feel is in the appropriate best interest to take on the questions that we, we started to ask? I think what we would do is we would start with the money follows the child question. And then, based on that information, we'll continue on from there. So this would be potentially a, a longer-term activity.
Yeah, we have our audit obviously going on right now. I can talk to, to the people at Bacon. They did the quick snapshot last year that I passed out to show, that kind of tested our numbers to make sure we had things in the right bucket type of thing. They found about a $100,000 adjustment, and I think something was counted in the federal in transportation twice. But it was pretty much, you know, you know, the numbers that we had put forth. I can see if they're interested in and expand it. But what, basically, I see it happening is us doing that work and them testing it for us, you know? That type of thing, like, that's...
Okay.
Yeah, I'll show, yeah, that's right. I'll show them that the state, the money doesn't follow the child because, for example, when there's 22 kids in a room or 23, you sort of have the lights and the heat in the building, in that room, you know? So you don't, you don't take a reduction in the heating bill because a student went away. So those are the things we point out, and they were verifying this for us, you know? We've done a lot of that work, Dr. Thornton has already, so...
Or you have a situation where you have one school department that can fund a girls' hockey program, and another one is a $4,000 difference per student, and they obviously cannot. That was my question. Any other questions? Thank you, Alex, appreciate that a lot.
Oh, and just so you know, I want to mention, these numbers could change based on data changing between now and when, you know, the budget actually comes out. And if the legislature, you know, depends on, you know, I mean, the legislature, there's no law that has the funding formula, you know, role, it's up to the General Assembly chair if they choose to fund it. So, you know, this is what we expect, but, you know, there could be changes, but I, you know, I don't expect major changes, to be honest with you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffy? Nothing works, do I? A new guy's back.
Quick question for you. So when I'm looking at the FY 2016 projected formula calculations, so when it says state share ratio quadratic mean, Cumberland, 42.5%. So just one question, so the state is going to pay 42.5% of our, what they assume our total budget is? Now, in...
What they, what? The core number times students, the free and reduced number added to it for the free and reduced students. That number times that state shares, what the state, that 42.5% that the state feels they should be contributing. In this case, I think it was 18 million change.
So my follow-up question to that, we have a lot of columns on it, but there's no column here that would show the other 57.5% that the local community is supposed to be paying. So is that just an assumption that we, as a community, are supposed to make? They would provide those?
Well, you know, BEP is, what is it?
It's aspirational.
This was, they were just, this was where she provided so that we would know what state aid is. This was again, it's a discussion time with, you know, who should be providing all the money here and all the rest of the money. But yeah, you would, you would deduce, if the state's giving 42.5%, the other 57.5% has to come from somewhere. Either us generating whatever, right?
Right, so that's my question. Why don't they put that, with all these lines we have, why don't they add that one last line that says the town is responsible, or the city is responsible for X?
It's aspirational.
It's aspirational, thank you.
It's just one word, that's how they responded to us. And it may make sense, we had talked about the opportunity for subcommittees based on the special program subcommittee. And given that we now have some projections for us, it might be time to, to begin that. So what I would suggest is a BEP subcommittee. Anyone who's interested in that, let me know, because I'm happy to put that together and put it on Tuesday's agenda. Thanks, Alex, appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve homeschool instruction requests, 2014, 2015, school year.
Recommend approval, I don't care.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mrs. Teal, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Demodica. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Who opposed? And that motion carries 7-0. Next item on the agenda is discussion and/or vote to approve first reading of new policies. G-12 professional responsibility for certified professionals and G-13 teacher standards. I actually have a question about this, Mr. Adams, you can earnest keep. So these are two new policies. They actually need two readings. So just so we do it correctly, they really shouldn't be agendaed this way, right? It's, I'm going to table these policies because they need a second reading before a vote.
I'm going to table these policies because they need a second reading before a vote.
That would be fine.
Correct. Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion to table G-12 professional responsibility for certified professionals and G-13, because they really need a second reading before they have a vote.
Okay. And I think what it's, what it appears to be agendaed is that it's approving the reading, so it's not really approving the policy.
Right.
I meant, I meant that.
We do it all the time, I just never ask the question. Yeah, and I...
It's just a reading. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the...
No, D, do you, you don't approve a reading, you just read it into the record.
I think that's fair, I think it benefits, I don't think you need to table, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the things that were under D, my apologies.
No, it's D, I'm just wondering, like, what is the correct way to agenda this? Does it need to be agendaed this way, or if it's a second?
I think you can, I think you could agenda it, agenda it as discussion.
As discussion and/or vote to approve the first reading?
Yes, or just first reading of new policies.
Yep. Okay. It's just that we did the first reading under public hearings. I just, I'm curious, do you do this twice? Because we did it under nine public hearing, reading of policies. I don't think we need to approve it. I think we can have the reading, we have the public hearing, and then it's, the ones that require two readings just are done. Right, okay, so thank you. So we'll take no action on these? Yes, please. There we go. And, may I continue? Yes, ma'am. Then for, do you want me to take them individually, or would you like them all together? There was one that was approved on a 2-1 vote, the rest were approved on a 3-0 vote, I don't know if you...
Pleasure of the committee? Approve in isolation or approve in a whole? Do each one at a time? Or do it as a whole?
As a whole, as a whole.
As a whole. Everyone okay with that? Thank you.
Madam Chair, seeing that policy and the problem...
Thank you, Mr. Salvatore.
So then I would like to make a motion to approve the following policies, they were approved by the majority on the policies subcommittee. G-6, personal benefit policy for non-unit administrators, I can't remember if that's the one that I was referencing, sorry. Okay. Thank you. I-2, computer internet electronic device acceptable use, which will also be G-14, computer internet electronic device acceptable use. J-18, school attendance areas boundary lines. J-19, student automobile use. J-20, student dress code. And K-4, school home communications. I make a motion to accept those policies as amended.
So we have a motion to approve the policies, amended policies as presented, and Mr. Salvatore seconds it. Any further discussion? Mr. Duffy?
Just wanted to say, I'm going to abstain from voting just because I have not reviewed any of these policies at this point, because as we were sitting here, I was just a bit up, so, just to make it clear as far as the vote goes, thank you.
We could take 30 seconds. Any further questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 6, 0, and 1 in session. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is personnel recommendations. Mrs. Spohle.
Good evening, I have two personnel recommendations for you. I have a retirement, I request the advising consent of the school committee on the retirement of Pauline Slater, school nurse teacher at Ashton Elementary School. This retirement would be effective December 31st of 2014, and this will be after 25 years of service with us. She wanted his ample notice.
Pleasure of the committee? Motion by Mr. DeMonica, second by Mr. Duffy. Any further discussion? I wonder how many Band-Aids Mrs. Slater has handed out and little cough drops. All those in favor? Those opposed? That carries 7-0. Thank you to Mrs. Slater for all of her years of service.
Yes. And lastly, I have, oh, not, well, I have an appointment. I request the advising consent of the school committee on the appointment of Joyce Bonner, purchasing clerk at Cumberland School Department, effective July 1st, 2014. This is a .6 position and it's an 11% co-pay. The reason that this is on the agenda, or this is on personnel recommendations, is that it was an oversight because Ms. Bonner was employed as a student activities, and she also started, you just didn't put it on, but it appropriate, it should have been on in front of you, so we wanted to just correct the record, and that's why it's reflected back to July 1st, which is when she actually started this position. If you remember correctly, this position being open because we had a retirement from the old purchasing clerk.
Pleasure of the committee? Motion by Mr. DeMonica, second by Mr. Dennett. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 7-0.
And lastly, I just have one, I know it was just put in your draft this morning, I had asked the chair if it was appropriate. We had, Dr. Thornton and I had a meeting with the athletic director, and we're informed that the middle school season starts on Monday. And so I did a mea culpa and asked for an exception to our normal notice policy, and so we're just asking to approve the middle school coaches. And so I'll read them off just so. So for basketball, we have North Cumberland Middle School, girls would be Paul Lombardi, and boys would be Jack Madden. For McCourt, girls would be John McNeil, and boys would be Laura Markelini. And then wrestling for North Cumberland Middle School, Steve Gorman. And for McCourt, Andrew Givens. I provided you with a backup, and so we're asking for approval of these so that the students can start practice on Monday.
Pleasure of the committee? Mr. Fierl?
Mrs. Spohle, these are all coaches that have coached in the past, correct?
Except for Mr. Lombardi and Mr. McNeil, who are the two star people, they are teachers with us, but they have not coached before. Neither of them, I asked, have their certifications yet, although their applications are into RIDE. Previously, I think we had maybe talked about this at a previous meeting, middle school coaches weren't necessarily required to have a coaching certification. We have made a decision with the new athletic director that it doesn't matter what level you're at, everyone will get a coaching, you know, they'll be required to be certified coaches. We did feel that because these two people are employees, we hired them as certified teachers, great backgrounds, they both have backgrounds in these, in these sports that, while typically we don't appoint before they get their certification, that, in this one instance, we would, also quite frankly, these positions would have no coach. So we thought since they were employed, that this was one exception you could make just for now. But they will both be certified. I already, both of them sent me emails confirming that their certification applications are already being processed by RIDE.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 7-0.
Thank you very much.
Next item, school committee comments, school Ds on reports. Mrs. DeMonica, sound out.
Madam Chair, I just want to say a big howdy thanking to the Cumberland Police Department for what happened last month, and getting out there to all our schools to make sure our parents knew that we were on, we were watching our field. So, the police report had many incidents of being out of schools. Big howdy, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMonica. Mr. Salvatore?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to recognize somebody who sits on the stage with us tonight. I got an email that came across, I think it went to everyone, about a client alert from Barton and Gilman, a legal representation. The company, the law firm that Steve Adams works at was ranked, again, best law firms, numerous attorneys selected as super lawyers. As Steve was not listed on that, personally, I do...
Can you discount that?
I do want to recognize Steve as an asset to our legal representation within this board, so, again, Barton and Gilman, one of the best law firms in the area, so, thanks, Steve.
Here, here.
Thank you, Mr. Salvatore.
So wonderful. Okay, next item, anyone else for school committee comments? I just want to recognize someone in the audience, the dials here, it's Jessie Goutash. I was wondering if you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone and talking a little bit about your FUSE fellowship, because it's pretty remarkable, and I think the committee would love to hear a little bit more about that. And you are one of the, like, the starting FUSE fellows, like, the premier group, right?
Yeah, so there are approximately 28 FUSE fellows that are starting the work around the state, and basically, it's a group being put together to accelerate blended learning, or the use of computers and utilizing technology in our classroom around the state. And so there's been a process to, it's been a huge process for us to go through and be trained on ways to incorporate technology and to use it. And so there are 30 educators, assistant principals, teachers from around the state, we were inducted on Monday night as part of this first cohort of people, and the goal will be for us to go out and spread the message and spread the word of blended learning, and I'll actually, I'm going to be working with Norris Smithfield as one of their representatives to go in, because the thinking is that being from a different district, it helps with a fresh set of eyes to go into a district and to be able to support them in a way that someone from, someone internally may not be able to do. So I will still be bringing some of those skills to Cumberland, of course, but I'll be working with Norris Smithfield, and so it's a really exciting endeavor. It's being funded by a learning accelerator grant and being run through the Highlander Institute, so, it's good stuff.
Congratulations, I think that's remarkable.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank the school committee for their support. I think we have a great committee, we're moving really in a wonderful direction, and honestly, there's a tremendous amount of respect and collaboration. I've never experienced that wholesale over, you know, my, gosh, start of my ninth year. It really is an awesome group, you're responsible, you're committed, you engage yourself in the community, and you have, you just, I'm really excited for what the next two years can bring. And, you know, over time, we've tried to create these, this progressive model that included some huge leadership changes, some huge technology changes in our district. It's a whole lot of work, but if you take a look inside, and I'm sure, you know, Mr. Dennett, you did the technology tour, the school district is really alive now, and years ago, it wasn't like that, it was, it was not as happy, there were pockets of success, and now there's just this incredible energy. And I think it really starts at the top, and I applaud all of you and appreciate the work that you've done and the respect that you've given, so, thank you very much. Next item, the, oh, yes, and I do apologize, I didn't recognize Councilwoman Scott Schmidt, thank you very much, Mr. Salvatore for the friendly reminder. Dr. Thornton, I do believe we have executive session this evening?
That's correct.
Okay, then I'm going to need a vote to go into executive session, I think we'll do that when we get there. So we're going to adjourn the meeting, we'll be ready when we come out, so, thank you all.